Hold meeting to order, Rob. Take your walk off, please.
Sure. Ms. Picora?
Here.
Ms. Geary is excused. Ms. Mans?
Here.
Mr. Conner?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Proctor's excused. Ms. Lanzetta?
Here.
Ms. Goto?
Here.
Or is it Gotta?
Gotta.
Gotta. Mr. Bogus?
Here.
Mr. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Baden?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. LaHodges, excuse. Ms. Welton?
Here.
Mr. Watkins? Not sure yet. Mr. Armquith?
Here.
Mr. Markowitz? Mr. Rudikoff?
Here.
Ms. Weiner?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
He texted me, Rob. He said he's on his way, but he'll be a little late.
All right. Mr. Goldman? And Mr. Cagliari?
Yeah.
All right. We got a quorum.
Texted from his car?
More importantly, he said he brought the candy.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yeah. As amended, yeah, there was one mistake.
What was the amendment so we'd have it?
Um, there was Mr. Murray recused on a medication that didn't show any refuse.
All right, that's, yeah, here in the agenda, okay.
Yeah, she had it in the agenda.
So that's Wilkin. Who's the second?
John.
Thank you, John.
Hold the favor. Close. Recuse. Education and training opportunities?
We have nothing to report at the staff level. My question to the board is, do you want to have a spring training session? Any particular topics?
How about, um...
Cindy?
How about, um, I'm still not clear as to what kinds of things can happen on agricultural properties as far as, uh, you know, site planners and...
Okay.
Or no site plans? What constitutes agricultural, you know?
Is Bob Summers still with Agon Markets or has he retired?
I think he's retired. I'm not sure. It was close, but I'm not sure. I think he's retired.
Yeah, because if he's, he's the master at speaking about it. If you can get him, and usually he's willing to come.
So let me ask a question. Let me ask a question that is not necessarily directly related to the land use review functions of a planning board, but more related to where we are as a community and where we are as a region. And what I'm speaking to is, um, the out of alignment report that was done by Patterns for Progress. If anybody had a chance to look at that, um, the out of alignment report for Patterns for Progress is, I think, a compendium of what's wrong from an economic and demographic perspective within the region, um, with some discussion in terms of, um, what needs to be done to change it. I would like to ask them, I don't know whether they would, um, but I would like to ask them if they would come and give a presentation, um, to the county, um, and invite everyone to attend, um, on that report. It talks about housing costs versus jobs. It talks about jobs versus people available to fill them. It talks about, um, things that are stressing, um, the individuals at a, at a medium income level or, or a moderate income level in terms of childcare. It speaks about the lack of our ability to produce housing. It talks about the cost of producing housing. And it basically says that when you look at the things of where the region wants to go, um, in terms of all our plans and all our, um, and all our aspirations, it's not where the region's headed. And for me, there's county profiles in there as well, um, that it does give you, you county profile of, of Ulster County. And for me, it's a bit of a step back from looking at, you know, how do we run planning, certain planning things? And it starts to take a look at, what should we be thinking about longer term? And what should we thinking, we should be thinking about regionally as well as, um, as well as locally? So that's, that's one of the things I'd like you to think about and see if I got any support for. The other thing is, is the county legislature, and I think this, this board and certainly the Planning Department, has been immersed in, in a discussion with respect to affordable housing and housing production in generally, in general. And taking a look at what those numbers mean, uh, or where we are and revisiting some of the recommendations in the older reports to see whether or not, to see what's out there so that people can understand where we are, where we were, and if we are still there, maybe something that we also should think about doing. Now, the out of alignment report does some of that, but we also have the tri-county housing study. We have a priority strategies for housing development in Ulster County. So it's more of a, it's more of a regional think, uh, and a trending think than essentially, how do we do certain kinds of transactional things as, as planning boards at the local level?
On that, uh, I think it's a good idea and all, but in some ways, these ideas are more or less geared to the legislative body of the municipalities, right? Not so much the planning.
Well, here's what I would...
I mean, the planning needs to learn some of this stuff.
Here's what I would say, and we've had this conversation at this, at this board as well. Planning boards don't just review projects. If you look at any zoning statute, one of the things that you do is make recommendations to planning boards relative to comprehensive plans, things that need to be changed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
That's what they're supposed to do.
Well, that's not what they're supposed to do. That's what their statutory, their statutory charge to do.
I know, uh, but, but the, the, the point, Dennis, that you, I've talked to you a little bit about, about coming down locally and all. And I think Mark has about the same problem with it that I have, is the boards all tend to be too short sighted. And on my board, they can't wait to get out, oh, let's just push this through. We were doing a seeker, and I brought up some questions. It was like, how dare you bring these questions up? Let's get, just, okay, the seeker and get out of here. And it's like, they can't wait to get it to adjournment.
I'm not sure that that's the case.
But I think, um, that what Dennis on that is if we bring this conversation to people and...
But I mean...
We do tend to get people to show up at these meetings because we have one thing to offer them is that they all need four hours to train. And we give it for free.
Right.
So part of the reason we pack the houses. Now, many of them, it goes in one ear and out, but others maybe will actually hear something that they'll take back to a meeting and they'll start to use.
And that might be Dennis, a thing where maybe if we could sometimes fix this up before you come down locally is to stress to the board, they need to be doing some of this stuff. That I don't see happening.
I can't, I certainly, we certainly offer.
I know.
And that's not, what I'm trying to do is see if, whether there's...
I mean, it's more of a two-step thing with us.
I think there's an opportunity to essentially push the needle in some direction that says when you look, when you look at this in its face, there's been this sort of like, well, everybody's employed. It's, uh, less than 4% unemployment rate, and houses are selling as quickly as we put them on the market. Aren't we all fat and happy? And the short answer is, is that we are in some instances, but there are things that are sort of bubbling in the background, sometimes into the foreground, that we need to think about. Housing, I mean, let me give you just some statistics that we started to look at in this. Back in the mid-eighties and into the nineties, we were doing somewhere in a neighborhood of 1,500 septic permits in this county on an annualized basis. And we were issuing somewhere in a neighborhood of 500 to 700 building permits for new construction. Last year in this county, we did 240. And we've averaged since 2010 around 250 to 300 permits a year. That's a huge shift in terms of our availability of housing.
Well, the bank's tightened up too after the housing.
And if you look at the demographics of the county and you start saying, well, where are we in the 2020 census? The census estimates are that we lose population. We age out, we lose population.
I, I think you're right on, on a countywide, I think you're right, but I was just venting some of my frustration at the local level.
Well, I, I, I think the opportunity to have this discussion is, is an opportunity to get them thinking about, um, what's out there and what the responsibilities are of a board. I mean, the city of Kingston is wrestling with a housing issue. Uh, that is significant. The short-term rental impact back through the communities, um, the aging of the communities, the, the switch from, the switch to service jobs and then out of service jobs, um, in terms of, in terms of what's happening in retail. The, the change from single-family demand for single-family housing to demand for apartment, apartment housing. And what's the response to that? Those are things I think that we can talk about simply, I mean, they, they, they cover a broad topic, but they're no different than challenges that we faced when, when we're talking about anything specific, whether it's, whether it's batteries, whether it's solar facilities or something like this. This is a, a real discussion of trends and market forces and, and demographics that I think local officials should be at least aware of, if not conversant in.
Well, Dennis, I, I think that the idea is interesting, but patterns cover a lot of the Hudson Valley.
But they do do, they did do a county profile for Ulster County.
If we could hear that?
Yep.
And maybe hear Northern Dutchess, but look like tying us in with orange and...
Yep, no, I, I hear what you're saying.
It's really two different animals.
Yeah, yeah. But I can, I hear what you're saying.
A lot of this would also be actually having other committees, like an economic development committee, maybe get together, and that would actually project...
I think this is broader, that the audience here is broader than the planning, those folks that need training, but it, but I, and I would hope they, they would come.
I think it would be helpful to, for towns that need to redo their comprehensive plan.
I throw that out there. I would ask board members if they have any ideas to let me know.
Dennis, sort of building on Cindy's idea, what about a, a training, since we have a two-hour session, on tourism-based businesses? Because they're not, it's not the traditional review process that'll, this is more toward planning and ZPA. It's not the traditional review where you're looking at brick and mortar buildings and setbacks.
You're talking about, um, we, we're going to see a proposed amendment today, talking about sort of camp, camping facilities.
Camping facilities, Airbnb's, special events.
Airbnbs, all of those things that are being driven into...
What about the businesses that you, you know...
Okay, that's a, that's a really good, that's a trend, that's a trend thing.
And the ones that come up on the trails?
Yep.
All the walk trail center now out there, the types that, that's supposed to be promoting.
Food trucks, I mean, very few municipalities had to deal with food trucks. Maybe you had a hot dog vendor on the side of the road, but it's, it's, it's something that you have to deal with now.
Okay. All right, so that's a great, that's another good suggestion. Let me, let me think about it. I'm more, I'm more, I have a tendency to think that your tourism-based businesses, um, and, and what they mean in terms of code and land uses, is probably what a lot of communities are wrestling with, particularly Airbnb's having, you know, starting to have weddings every weekend.
I'll tell you, the biggest, biggest thing we're fighting with in our community is how to deal with the noise of it without, without...
Noise, yeah.
...writing too restrictive a code that somebody who mows their lawn on a Sunday is going to be in trouble.
Yeah, and I...
You know, it's that balance.
I sort of have to find myself, who's the, you know, finding the resident expert on who's, who, who deals with this and, you know, who's dealt with this.
I, I could probably send you a couple directions.
Okay, why don't we do that? So we'll, we'll look at the two, we'll look at all three of those and see if, and see what pans out, and maybe we end up with two? I don't think I'm capable of dealing with three, but maybe we end up with two.
I think the agri tourism kind of goes, I think you could incorporate it all.
Yeah, and your idea spurred me into thinking that, yeah.
All right. All right, so give me some time with that. Rob, you're going to help me with this. Burton, you're going to help me.
Time's up.
Time's up, we're ready to move on.
Waiting for Mr. ... We're 20% through the agenda, as somebody would say.
One other thing about training, if anyone doesn't have, uh, the New York Federation, the new members who are, I got, like, this one's addressed to me, but, uh, I get one from the town level, so anyone, new members that don't have that, did one of these?
Is that the...
There's, there's...
Getting...
Yeah, there's about four or five, four copies left up here, in case someone wants.
Our town is sending two planning board members up to that. We're not paying their housing, but we're paying their, their transportation and, and their cost of the conference, and I, I can tell you, it's, it's, it's a three, well, it's a half a day, a full day, and a half a day, but it is a lot of really diverse topics and not the standard topics that you hear about, and it's well worth it.
They've had quite a few good speakers. Community reports?
Did everybody, did everybody hear Jared? You're going to have to speak up here because they can't hear you.
Sorry. Community reports?
Those new polls passed a fire sprinkler law last week requiring new residential construction or expansions of 50% or more of existing homes to have a 13D sprinkler system, which is a system that protects egresses and is up to, has been set up to the D-list. Also, last week, we received a report from our PD where pedestrian car crash statistics doubled, uh, from the previous year up fivefold over the previous four years. The community's pretty up in arms about this, after the accidents occurred on Main Street. The mayor met with DOT and they essentially recommended an education campaign for the community, whereas, uh, suggestions of crosswalks, controls, reducing the speed limits for discount. No surprise.
Yeah, and, uh, the transportation council representatives were there. I was there for that meeting, and we've offered to do some, what they call myo-vision counts, which is where the people cross. Uh, I'm not sure that the accident locations correspond, the incidents of crash increases correspond with where people, where, where, where they want us to focus our, focus the efforts on crosswalks. And DOT's response is, is it's not safe, and just because you put a crosswalk in and sign it doesn't make it any safer. So it's not like they, it's not like they rejected it out of hand, they just said, "It's not safe." And...
One thing I couldn't stop in that report is just the indicated time of day, because at night, you cannot sleep until they're all dressed in black and being locked to a car.
You don't, do, do they have a locational database for that?
Well, uh, this is something I've asked PD for, and they're diving a bit deeper into the data. We don't have that data yet, but it's pretty basic data that they...
We get the, we get the, um, we get the crash, we can, we can get crash data from the state, uh, as an NPO. They will release the crash data, and we, we are in the, we are in the process, we've just hired a consulting firm to, to take a look at road safety countywide, and they're going to categorize crash data by type of, type of crash, type of roadway, municipality, et cetera. Now, it's early going with that, but we routinely pull crash data. The problem is, is it's at least a year old. So you're, but you're looking, when you do crash data, you, you don't rely on a single year. You rely on, at, at a minimum, if you're doing any work, you rely on five-year averages. And usually more than that, if you're going to do any kind of work, because single years, you never know. It could be a bad snow season, you know? So that's typically what we do, but I can pull that, those kinds of crash data. If they're reporting crash data to you folks, I'd be interested in, I'd be interested in the data report, not necessarily to, to do anything with it, but just to, to know that it's out there and how it's reported, and if they're using the forms that they report to the state on that data.
Sure. Uh, the, the data wasn't available for your meeting. This was, this is new data that came out, I think the next day, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
I received it, PD distributed it to it. But, uh, yeah, uh, the community's looking for solutions, and there are more conversations, so, um, that's where we're at with it.
So any other community?
Any other reports?
Got one for Alden. So I went way back after I read, the government came up with money, at that time it was called New York Rising Money, and, uh, finally, just past two weeks, they opened the bids up for realigning the Bushkill stream along County Route 42. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that road, but there's a bridge that goes across it, so from that bridge back down towards 28, well, there'll be a lot of stream work done, realigning the water going under the bridge, because right now, so the center here on one side of it's completely clogged up, and it's all going to the other side, um, and moving the stream away from County Route 42. So it's, so what they've all done is should avoid flooding for a couple of properties, but primarily alleviate erosion. The way it was going, Oakland was going to load the road away. The other thing is, um, in Boyceville, I think I mentioned before, there's been a couple of, there's some properties there that have gone with the flood buyout. So four properties north of 28, uh, those properties have all closed. So my assumption is DEP's responsible for taking the structures down, so my assumption is sometime this spring or this summer, that will probably happen. If you're, if you're familiar with Boyceville, the building I'm talking about, there's, um, there's a log cabin there and a little tiny strip mall next to it, that's one property. Two doors down, there's a yellow house, it's kind of behind a, some hitched grove, that's one. The Boyceville Forest, and right next to that, what looks like an old schoolhouse. Those are the four properties. And the other property that has opted in, for some reason it's kind of dragged their feet, but they haven't signed the contract, is what used to be the old Stucky Soldier Studio.
How about the, the old landmark, Drew? I heard they would have opted as well.
Well, I'd heard a rumor that they, you know, they bought the property, I think they had ideas of some, doing something with it, but then I heard a rumor of an official to the town I'm aware of that they were thinking about to buy out also.
I think they ran into the flood laws that relates to the improvements they wanted to make.
I think that's, that's the impression, and that, that turns out to be one of our big problems in Boyceville, is most of the properties I just mentioned have been trying to sell their property one way or the other for years, and anytime anybody is interested, as soon as they find out, one, it's in plus, knowing, two, what they have to do with all of that, they just backed out of the deal.
And there's properties to the north. I understand if you look at, if anybody goes through Phoenicia, and I apologize for taking the board's time, um, the, the Hamlet of Phoenicians was within the 10-year flood, and these properties that we're talking about are well within the 100-year flood. And as you move south towards Kingston, or east towards Kingston, depending upon your geographic reference, um, the, the land rises and it's out of the flood, and as you move towards the Aniora School up in that way, the land rises and it's out of the flood plain as well. Sewer, sewer plant, however, serves the area that's in the flood plain, which is problematic. But my, my understanding is just their properties to the west, up by the Aniora School, are kind of going to come back, coming up for Ulster County for auction. Have you heard that or not?
On the school side of town?
No, it's on the other side.
Well, that would be good, because if you remember, we did a...
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
That land that we worked at could be easily be developed, if, if we could get somebody to do it.
So one of the things that a community can do if it's coming off, up for auction is the community can actually ask the county to pull them for municipal purposes? Something to think about.
Drew, your supervisor should have gotten a list of all the properties that were for auction and a request from the, uh, Burke Goldman County Finance if the town was interested in pursuing, taking control of any of those.
How does that actually happen?
Uh, well, you would have to notify the county you were interested, and then if it, if it doesn't get bought at, they can, the county can either pull it for auction or they can put it up, and if nobody buys it, then they can offer it to the town, uh, and then you essentially sign an agreement through the legislature to take control of the property. But he should have, and I know you have a branded supervisor, so he may be brand new to this, but he should have gotten a list. Actually, your code enforcement officer got the original list, and then it was, your supervisor had to sign off.
All right, I'll look into that. Good idea.
Yeah, but you could request it to be considered for, to be given to the community.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Uh, one other thing on Boyceville, the Chocan rail trail sure seems to be popular even in the wintertime. I have yet, I have yet to go by the, the, uh, showhead in Chocan, and there wasn't at least one or two cars there. In most days, there's five or six at least. I think it's going to be interesting when spring gets here, to see, you know, how the parking goes.
Yeah, we're, we're certainly concerned about that relative to the parking demand versus the parking availability for the trail.
I think the Boyceville end is probably the one that's going to be challenged the most.
Yeah, and that's a temporary, temporary space, but, um, the responsibility for those trails are the, the access points, there's DEP, but we've done a lot of work with our trail stewards folks to essentially, Chris has been involved in this, to essentially try to make sure it goes as smooth as possible, but, um, there's a real potential, at least on peak weekends or, or on weekends, that, um, we could run into some issues relative to, to parking. And that's happened already during very warm weekends in the summer where that's happened, I mean, in, in the winter where that's happened. So we're thinking about what we're going to do, but there's not a lot of real good... There are some things that we think we can do in terms of making sure that people are aware that the lot's full and sort of cut down the traffic that's moving back and forth in and out, particularly at the Woodstock Dyke area, but anyway, uh, thanks for that.
What do you mean by temporary?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
What, you were saying that was a temporary, um...
The one in Boyceville is actually temporary because they're going to build the bridge.
Okay.
And when DEP builds the bridge, they will then move that into a permanent, more of a permanent parking facility.
Oh, okay, but it'll be open during that time?
Oh, it's open, yeah, it's...
I mean, it's going to stay open during the construction?
For the bridge construction, I am not sure.
I would, would have to, based on where it is, I think it would.
Yeah.
So the intention is, that's the road there, 288, that'll stay open until the bridge is being built.
It's the need for, it's the need for project laydown areas and, and, uh...
Yeah.
And, and mobile, mobile facilities and, and, uh, project offices that, um, I, I just don't know, I'm not in depth with their, with their set of drawings yet.
The staging area.
Yeah.
I've got one real quick there. Town of Rochester's second community solar facility went online in December. Our first one went online in October, beginning October. It's not creating near as much as was hoped, but then again, November, December is not the best time of the year to gauge how much solar is being produced, so, uh, the people are seeing the billing credits that were, were promised, and the town has gotten their rent for the land and seems to be working well.
No, uh, planning report in the chair? Committee?
Okay, financial report, we're in good shape. It's early in the year yet, um, so, uh, we, nobody's asked us to cut our budget so far. And, um, we do have a substantial amount of money in professional services to do our work with the Transportation Council. And we are, we also have other money available, and I'll talk about that in something else. So on the environmental notice bulletin, I have nothing really to talk about with respect to that, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I have one, I'm just looking at that. I noticed a few of them on there are type-two actions that are unlisted. I thought it was only for type-one actions that were going on there.
No, I think unlisted actions can go on. I, I'd be unusual to see type-two actions on.
Well, I mean, there's two. There's one on the back page of Town of Rosendale.
Sometimes the DEC...
And Town of Lloyd, that's one.
The DEC ones that are type-two, they, DEC tends to publish them because they get published for other reasons.
The back one is, but the one in Town of Lloyd is, uh, from, uh, Office of Children and...
Yeah, maybe a state agency.
The state agency, yeah.
Yeah.
They have another set of requirements.
Yeah, there's a couple, all right, so there's, oh, because I didn't know what was the flag, because I thought it was just type-one. Just wanted to clarify.
All right, now, the other communication I, I just want, well, I don't have anything I can communicate... Alright, now, the other communication I, I just want, well, I don't have anything on communications either, just if anybody has any questions on that. We did get the, that communication from Marble Town with respect to the, the, what's the name of the project now? Danit Solar Project in, in the town of Marble Town. That's, that we did get a communication. So director staff reports, two things are happening right away, and I'm gonna let Bert talk about one, but I'm gonna take the first one, Bert. And that is the Census twenty-twenty. Census twenty-twenty is gonna roll out, you, people in your community should start receiving packets. Those packets, depending upon where you are, what community you're in, will either be a card that says you can fill it out electronically, a reminder, or a actual, or an actual, or an actual form that, a paper form that you can actually fill out. And it depends, the hard-to-count areas are likely to get all three of the, of the, of the notices, whereas the ones that have been responding well, we're likely to just get a card that indicates that you shouldn't respond to the census. Everybody should know you're required by law to respond to the census. And in general, you're, you respond where you are or where you reside the most. And if you're in between domiciles, or homeless, or et cetera, you respond where you-
It's where you are on April first.
April first.
That's not what the census guy said, I was just there.
It's where, no, that's not-
He said, he said, he said, I was just there. Tell you what the guy from the census said. He said that if, if you're in between domiciles, for example, if you live in Florida, but most of the time you spend in New York State, you're supposed to report yourself being in New York State.
Actually, this year, they clarified that.
Yeah.
Ten years ago, they said where you were on April first, and everybody was confused.
Yeah, so they, they, they made some subtle changes, as we can tell by staff discussing. And it's the same thing with respect to children and pregnancies, and I don't wanna get into that, but there are other changes with regard to that as well. Why is this important? There is enormous amount of federal money in, in programs that are dependent upon the census. It's easy to fill out, there are eleven questions. The county is going to place, the county has an allocation for census dollars from the state that we have to apply for. We will be applying for that money probably by the end of this week, if not early next week. We're not sure what we'll get yet, the guidance from the state is ongoing, I would say, is the kindest way to say it. We would have to give about seventy-five percent of that money to nonprofits to do outreach work. We had a kickoff meeting with the census on Tuesday. And part of that kickoff meeting was to make sure that we had nonprofits to work with. They have to register with the state and be approved by the state before we can give them money. We had about forty people there, and we've had some responses already with the nonprofits. The nonprofits that we would work with would work with hard-to-count communities and hard-to-count geographic areas. Hard-to-count communities are generally seniors, Hispanics.
Children under five.
Children under five, and there's another hard-to-count community, but anyway.
Cemeteries.
Cemetery. It was an interesting thing, 'cause he actually did say that they, they actually, there's some scams that they ran. They found one mayor, and I forgot the name of the city, that in the last census was actually having people fill out forms using the names of people in cemeteries. And they caught him at it. So he says, you'll, you'll get caught if you try to cheat, so. But some interesting things that he talked about was, and some interesting things that we plan to do, is we're gonna develop our own census logo for Ulster County. And from the hard-to-count geographic areas, it's, oh, farmers was the other one that are hard-to-count communities. Yeah, they are. And the other, and, and the hard-to-count geographies are literally the Warrising area, the Rochester area, and up into the mountains, and then New Paltz, believe it or not, because of the number of students that live in, not, not so, the dorms get counted fairly well, but it's the off-site, off-site student housing that suffers. And the same thing with respect to the city of Kingston, portions of the city of Kingston are hard-to-count areas. We anticipate this will be a robust effort for us. We hopefully will engage a number of nonprofits, including Catholic charities, Family of Woodstock, RUPCO, NAACP, others, others of that ilk, to reach that, to reach these communities. And that's not an exhaustive list, nor is it an inclusive list. Some of those may or may not want to participate, and some of those may or may not be allowed to participate. But we intend to do that. We have a fairly robust generalized campaign, campaign as well, to raise the awareness. So I'm asking board members to be emboldened from the census, and to alert your towns that the census is coming, and if you think about it, it's still not too late to perform, to form a complete count committee at the town level. And it's still not too late to hold events in your community relative to, to that. Some of the quirky things that we've seen, talked about, is having first responders actually participate in the census. Having the homeless, some of the homeless folks participate in the census. Having challenges between who, you know, who, who does the most, who, who has the best count from communities. The one that loses essentially buys the other lunch, or washes the dirtiest fire truck, what'd he say, washes the-
Fire districts have a competitive, friendly competition, and whoever loses has to wash the other district's fire trucks.
Yeah. You can't combine, you can't combine census outreach with asking others for money, just so you know. But, or political, or political donations. But we anticipate that, that it's very important to us, that these things will start arriving about the middle of March, and will continue right on up through till the end of June and into July, when the count has to be completed. If you don't respond in the first go-around, there'll be various other ways to contact you, they'll try again. But eventually, they end up doing door-to-door canvassing. We wanna limit the amount of door-to-door canvassing that's done to the minimum possible, because it costs a lot of money. If anyone is looking for work, or you know anyone that's looking for work within your community, the census is currently looking at somewhere, did he say, what'd he say?
Twenty-three an hour.
I, I was looking at the number, I think it was something in the neighborhood of-
Five hundred, four hundred jobs?
I think, I think he shorted that, it was like fifteen hundred jobs in Ulster County for, to do the census work, and I think he shorted about four or five hundred.
I think it was about five hundred.
Yeah, right now, but it's about twenty-three dollars an hour. For those folks that are on assistance, it does not count towards your assistance dollars. So it doesn't count towards SNAP, and he named a few other programs that are out there. I know our social service agencies are on top of that. But just be aware that census is important. If you're, if some, you know somebody that's looking for a second work, they, they will literally work around your work schedule. But you, you are a federal employee, so you have to jump through some hoops to get there, including background checks, et cetera, fingerprinting, and all of that other stuff. But-
So Dennis, you know, you mentioned New Paltz because of the students, so is there some special outreach to SUNY?
The SUNY campuses are each have, the SUNY campuses each have a, an individual that's been charged with essentially helping to implement the census. For the dorms, there's various ways they respond. Sometimes they actually just give the, the, the census company that, the, who's in the dorms. It's, the problem in New Paltz is not the dormitories, the problem, or what they call group quarters. Problem in New Paltz is literally apartment complexes and the students inside the apartment complexes who have a tendency to ignore mail, quite frankly.
Well, it doesn't always come to them, or it's not-
Right, but the interesting part about that is, is the digital nature of this, I think, is, is going to help to get student response. So you can respond on your smartphone, or you can respond on your computer.
So how do they know about it?
Or you can call a phone number.
Or, well, how do they know about it is, we intend to wrap buses, we intend to make sure that there's handouts. We're gonna ask the business community to become census partners and post in the cen, those are things that, and if the community wants a special census event, the Census Bureau is more than willing to do that. And there's gonna be special enumerators assigned to those hard-to-count areas.
So those students who are, who are renting in houses in the village are gonna report census for their home?
No, no.
They're gonna report to the village?
In point of fact, those students, since they spend the majority of their time in New Paltz, nine months out of the year in New Paltz, are being told to report as, as their residents in New Paltz. And if you can remember, that, that raises the issue of voting. And it, or it has raised the issue of voting, and it has raised, and it has raised the ability of New Paltz to attract dollars for programs, because they don't have any income. So they report, they report very little income, so you're a very poor community. So Bert, I was gonna ask you to talk about ag districts.
Or the listening sessions?
Yes.
The Corral Cooperative Extension, they're gonna have what they call listening sessions, they're stakeholder workshops. It's really geared towards farmers, and those who work closely with farmers. It's gonna feed into a report, it's gonna go to the county executive, and there's some things they're trying to get a better gauge on. A lot of farmers took a hit with hemp. We're curious on the stresses on the apple orchards. Their other sectors are doing really, really well, and Tom and I talked about the stresses on the horse farms. The Hudson Valley Post talked about a big horse farm in Milbrook that's up for sale. And so these are a lot of things at play, and we really wanna have a report that we can give to the county executive that we can help them make some informed policy decisions. And the, the information from these sessions will hopefully feed an agricultural plan in the future, some sort. They're gonna be on, one's gonna be on February twenty-fifth, the other one will be on March fifth. They're midday, I think the one on the twenty-fifth is from twelve to three, the one, and the one on March fifth is from eleven to two. Lunch will be served, and like I said, it's really geared towards farmers and those who work directly with farmers. Okay?
Thanks, Bert.
Dennis, can I add one more thing about the census? For people, some people may know, I was a census worker, I was a regional crew director ten years ago. But the data that is captured in the census by law can't be shared for seventy-two years.
Yeah.
It is to the level that census workers are exempt if you walk into a situation and you observe a crime or an illegal activity. You cannot be compelled to testify. You cannot be, you're not held accountable for anything you see, and was it Title thirteen it's called?
Yeah.
And it's really important that people realize the data that is, they're giving is gonna be captured in a census block area. Not, it's not gonna be identifiable, it will never be identifiable where somebody can identify what, how an individual responded, so.
And that's important in terms of the, in terms of the hard-to-count-
For people who worry about giving up their data, and as Dennis said, it's eleven questions. And the other thing they said is, they will never ask your social security number, they will never ask credit card information, because every ten years, when the census comes up, new scams appear. So if anybody is asking that information, it is, it has a scam.
They have nothing to do with the census.
Is there a website address or something that we can get, maybe give more in an outline?
Sure, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna, I'll email you the census information packet that we gave to our partners, so that you have it. How's that?
Perfect.
Do you want a presentation next month?
Hey Bert, where's that meeting on the twenty-fifth and the-
Twenty-fifth will be in Kingston, at Corral Cooperative Extension, and the one on the fifth will be at the lab, Dr. Marlborough, or Lloyd, I forget. Lloyd.
Thank you.
We'll do a short presentation, I heard, I heard you, Robert. We'll do a short presentation on the census, on next month.
I might add that, out of those eleven questions, the amount of data that you get out, that you can derive from this is outstanding.
Yeah.
The census presentation I went to, I couldn't believe how much they, they provide, just out of those, those questions. Pretty incredible.
Okay. I have nothing on, nothing else, and I have nothing on special topics.
Any public comment?
I have a question before I drop it started. Town of Rochester is looking for a building inspector.
So it's a town in New Paltz.
So if anybody knows of anybody who'd like to be a building inspector and work for the Town of Rochester?
I'd work for three dollars an hour, you go.
I'm not sure what the salary is, but it's full-time, all benefits. Have to-
I'm good.
Have to take the building inspector's exam within the first year, and then the state requirements, but-
The first year is eighteen months.
I think it's eighteen months.
Can't find players?
I think it's eighteen months.
If anybody's looking for a job, it's, it's open. Don't call me, call the building inspector. The only one.
And Mark would just help with-
Mark, Mark Jaffe? You have the Mark Jaffe?
Bert? Rob, you ready?
Alright, let's get started. First one's for the, for Town of Gardner, any retentions?
Alright, so Gardner is having a regulation of tourism accommodations. And mostly what this is, they're amending the zoning statute, and also their travel trailers and tourist camps statute. So that's actually another special authorization. But what they're trying to do is get a better handle on campgrounds, and the way they're handled, something called residential camping, day camps, and all sorts of camping activities throughout the town, is what they're essentially doing. The first thing they're doing is, they're creating a new floating zone, which is called a campground floating zone. And what they're doing with that, I'm gonna move on to the next slide here, is it's only allowed in the RA and SP one zones. And what they're also doing is, and you'll see this later, is all existing campgrounds can only expand less than ten units. If a new campground comes online, or wants to go beyond, or an existing one wants to go beyond ten new units, they have to create a floating zone. So what they're doing essentially is adding a layer of, of review to the, to the, to the review of these things, so they can more regulate where campgrounds go, there's gonna be more of them. And one we're most concerned with is this residential camping standard. And this allows for accessory camping sites, and it's one camping unit. And what a camping unit is, essentially anything that's a non-permit structure. So it could be an RV, it could be a Yurt, as long as it's not a cabin, or something that's not on wheels. It pretty much qualifies for that. So local setbacks apply also, and let me go back to the definition here, so, hang on. No, it's right here. So local setbacks apply also for sixty days. So it's not complying necessarily with short-term rentals, because they can go up to sixty days, whereas short-term rentals, anything more than, less than thirty days is a short-term, is called a concerted short-term rental. But what these can do is go on essentially any residential lot as an accessory use. There's no minimum acreage size other than what's allowed under the zoning district, and are allowed throughout the town by, as an accessory use.
So clarify for that, for me. So any residential, any residential lot, or any res, any, it's accessory to a residential use?
Yes.
That's right, so it has to be, there has to be a residence on the site.
Correct.
And it's allowed in any zoning district?
As far as I know, it's allowed in, as an accessory use to residential uses.
So it's allowed in any zoning district as an accessory use?
Right.
And you can do it for sixty days?
Right.
In a continuous twelve months, so if you start in, if you start in June, you can go to June, and you get sixty days in June. You can get sixty days total.
Right, over to summer.
So wait, does this thing have to be taken down, or it means someone can, can occupy it for sixty, I'm confused.
Well, so are we, obviously. So it, it, it can't be a permanent structure?
No, it's not a permanent structure, it's up to sixty, no more than sixty days.
Rob, how do they define a camping unit? Do they, do they define-
Camping unit is a non-per, basically a non-permit structures.
They do, Mike, they do.
They, they specify, it's longer defined, but they basically define every type of, of non-permit camping, RVs, both trailer, non-trailer, tents, everything, except for basically a cabin.
So this can be a summer, every summer?
Yeah, they can put a tent site up on the property and-
For sixty days.
For sixty days.
That's what that tenter thing does, they come in and-
Well, that's what this is, the reaction to tenter.
I'll, I'll just, before we get to the recommendations, they also have new camp- I'll just, before we get to the recommendations, they also have new campground standards, so, as I said before, so new campgrounds are only allowed in this floating district. Existing campgrounds can add up to 10 camping spaces via site plan, but then if they wanna go beyond the tent, they need a special permit, and they need to be added to this CF floating zone. And then they have some pretty standard requirements for campgrounds, such as a 10-acre minimum, eight-and-a-half-foot wide vehicles, and they must remain on wheels, and then separation, some screening requirements, and road standard requirements. Our main concerns are the residential camping, which is why, well, we now know why it's 60 days. They wanna cover the summer. So, but if they're gonna be treated like short-term rentals, perhaps they should also, for 30 days, be also treated by, like, short-term rentals, or be subject to that same rule.
So is the 60 days assumed to be continuous, or it could be broken up into 10, six-day periods?
It can be broken up. It would be 60 days within a continuous 12-month period. So you could rent it every weekend and not get the 60 days for nine months, 10 months.
And we just wonder what?
It's accessory use.
Right. And as an advisory comment, wanna know, maybe they wanna limit this a little bit more, provide some more standards as to minimum lot sizes, locations, things of that nature, some better standards for the planning board to review this by.
I could see the area variance.
And they can, they can stick a porta potty in the back, and they're, they're fine?
Their requirement is that all wastes either have to be moved from site or treated on site. So they, that's, that was the subtotal of those requirements.
Can we see that party? Porta potty then qualifies?
Would be removed, sorry.
It can be removed, I guess it would.
Yeah. It's a very, um, it's a very, it's a very liberal way to deal with attracting additional activity within, within your residential districts. It's an odd, we've never, I've never seen anything quite this liberal, which basically says that any house, any, it's an accessory use automatically, and, and it's allowed in all the districts.
It would strike me as almost impossible to enforce, also, 60 days.
Well, one of the, one of the standards here, hang on, I'm gonna go back.
Let's say install a registration.
Once they establish their short-term rental requirements, these are all gonna be, have to register it under short-term rental law. So that's how they're gonna, and they'll also require, so they'll also get, collect that tax, I would imagine, under that.
So the 60 days is really if you're residential use and you're not operating as a short-term rental. If you're operating as a short-term rental, then you have to apply to the short-term rental law.
Yeah, one would presume that they're also going to, when they write, write the short-term rental laws, not let them do, do both.
Right. What doesn't exist, they haven't written yet?
They haven't written it, yeah.
It's in draft right now.
So you can do a short-term rental and have a yurt in the backyard, and, and I.
Can they specify the timeframe they're gonna do it? In other words, have that written down somewhere, so that they know when they're there, so you don't have to, towns don't have to go out and actually police it. So if they're gonna do it six, was it two-day, or I think it would be, right? Or 10s? Is it how it would work, how it would work? However it divides up. Make sure that it's written down.
Does Gardner have a minimum-sized lot?
Well, it would be subject to whatever district it's in, so it would be that minimum lot size for that accessory use. The accessory use regulations would apply to.
So they're only allowing it in the RA and SP1?
No, that's for campgrounds.
So it could be in any, in the Town of Ulster, you can go on R30, which is the 30,000 split-wood block?
Yeah, well, well, you wouldn't probably allow it anywhere in town.
Well, but it might not meet, it might not meet the setbacks.
Right. It does have, it does have to comply with local setbacks, so.
Okay, so local setbacks, right.
So did you go through the 30-day versus 60-days, what, what you're trying to say there? If, if you're gonna make it a required, I think it needs to be clear.
Sure. Well, I don't know, we'll, we'll, let's talk about whether we wanna include that or not.
I don't understand it.
It's the length of time it can be rented versus the length of time that it can be used. So the 30-day rule is no, if you're more than 30 days as a renter, you're no longer short-term. So you don't want somebody to do a short, to basically go in and stay in the tent for, for 60 days, right?
Why not?
That's a good question. I would presume you didn't, but maybe, you know, maybe you do, I don't know.
Well, typically, if it's more than 30 days, then it's rental, you know, that's the way they're seeing it. So they, they could be renting out an RV or a trailer on their property at that point.
But I think they were trying to make it more clear by making the rule the way they wrote it.
Or maybe there's, by 60 days, they're saying it's a summer rental. I don't know.
We're not stuck on the, on that required modification. I think the important modification is, from my mind, is, is the, is the residential camping standards and whether that should be allowed in all the districts, particularly the hamlet districts or the higher-density residential districts. I think that's the more important thing for the board to consider.
I think the, the.
I don't think it should.
If it requires to be considered the zoning requirements for that lot, I think that's what you were saying, that that would cover that issue.
Well, the setback requirement to some of these residential districts is 15 feet. So if you live next door in a, in a residential district, and the guy sets up a camp for 60 days 15 feet from your bedroom window, you're gonna be a happy camper?
Is there, is there another requirement? Is there any other requirements for, for a permit for an accessory unit?
These are, it basically just got added to their, they have a long laundry list of allowed accessory uses for residences. All they did was, and residential camping, residential camping.
So that, that would be in addition to whatever they require for an accessory unit?
That's an, it's an addition to what's allowed.
It's not an accessory unit. It, it's a camping space. And it's allowed as an accessory use, just like a garage is an accessory use, just like a.
It's in that same list as sheds, garages.
It's exactly like that.
That's exactly what the list that said.
So in essence, then, they're not treating it like a short-term rental. They're saying it's an accessory.
They're gonna make them register as a short-term rental if they, if, when they pass the law, but they're not treating it as a short-term rental. That's correct.
But we don't know if it's in every zone.
It is, if it's an accessory use.
It's in any zone that allows residential. Some zones may not allow residential, but I'm guessing.
It would, it would look like any house with a lot on it, that, 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 with, any lot with a house on it would effectively be allowed to do this.
It has to have a residential.
Yeah, 'cause it's accessory to the residential use, so yes.
So what is the day and overnight camp standards applied to? Are those two different?
Yeah, two different things.
These are for children's camps, these are for day camps and overnight camps. Yeah, they don't have any issues with respect to that. So I think the issue we wanna boil down to is, what advisory comments do we wanna give, or require modifications do we wanna give back to the town? I think maybe advisory comments that they wanna think a little bit more strongly about where they allow them, minimum lot size, things of that, that nature.
Well, I think that that's our main concern, I think. So I think that that should be required modification. I don't make that motion.
Is, in the higher-density areas, they should, they should limit them, restrict them, or what are we talking about?
More specific.
Should, should we say it should be a minimum setback of 50 feet? I mean, I don't know.
Well, now you're gonna start writing.
Well, you're not, you're not gonna write their law for it. They're gonna have to do.
Yeah, but, but, you know, Dennis' point of a camper 15 feet from somebody's house.
I just wonder if they've given this any thought. I mean, you could have a whole street with everybody on the street having, every neighbor having.
Can they be in the front yard?
Have they really given this?
Accessory units can't.
So rather than giving it a carte blanche, we're asking them to take a look at it to see where, for.
Well, can I ask, does this Board of Health have anything to say about the fact that people would be there for 60 days without any running water necessarily?
Board of Health doesn't cover water, only septic.
Only septic, yeah.
And these units would either use the septic that's in the house, or.
Porta potty.
I think we can put the, the running water. There's no water.
There's no requirement that you put water on any house?
Well, let's not say that, because you're, you're looking at these as tent spaces, right? But remember, the definition of a camp space, let me do two things. One is, the definition of a camp space is anything on wheels or anything not permanent. So this could be an RV. You could pull an RV up there.
Absolutely.
It still has to connect to something for water, correct?
No, it doesn't, no. Carry it with it, and move offsite, and come back, drive back onsite. So I think the main thing we should be concerned about would be indication, the recommendation should be an indication that they should consider limiting to these, to the less-dense areas of the community.
Yes, yes, I, I absolutely.
Let them pick that zoning district, so what, what that means, but I think there's, there's an RAG1 district in the town, I think, that's mostly three-acre lots. If they wanna do this with three-acre lots.
There's an RA, and there's the SP1.
Right, so I think what we should do is say that, that we, that, that these, these should be, not be permitted.